Next item on the agenda is public hearing. The first one will be levying assessments for the North Campus Division. Any comments from anyone? Hearing's over. Boy.
Do we need to do the resolution first? Or online? Any comments on the levying assessments for the North Campus Division?
Yes, sir, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
What's levying assessments, what does that mean?
That's for the streets, the new streets up there.
Who's going to get taxed for it?
The property owners.
The property owners?
Yeah.
What's this, I see in the paper. So I thought it was citizens of Beloit were going to get taxed for all parcels of ground and buildings and what have you. Is it just up there?
Yes, it's property owners at North Campus. They have the option of paying their assessment in full upfront, or they can pay it for 10 years on their county taxes as a special assessment.
And they have already been assessed at? That's part of that 300,000?
That's the ordinance tonight. Once that ordinance is passed, then they will be assessed, their first assessment will be on their 2016 taxes.
Haven't they been billed already?
They've been sent notice of what their total is.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And then the other 800, 400,000, what's that?
One of them is the North Campus project, which is the north half of that.
Who's paying that?
Case up there. And the Silver Fox is the south, is the Cooper subdivision.
And then I as a property owner, in the city of Beloit, not going to pay any of that?
No, the city does own some lots up there.
Yeah.
So those will be assessed. We will assess those, but as the city sells our lots, the price of each lot will go up based on how much we've, how much of the assessment we've already paid. If that makes sense.
How long, how long are you putting this on, a 10-year, like where you're a homeowner?
Yep.
Okay.
10 years, 6%. Yep.
Say what?
10 years at 6% interest.
And that's just for the material?
Correct.
Where did this money come from already? You already paid out a bunch of money to the guy that built the street and where did that, what fund did that come out, because always, if I'm not mistaken, you guys have to take it out of line item?
No, it actually came out of a bond issue.
It's what?
A bond issue. We sold a revenue bond for the improvements.
So you're going to borrow the money?
Yeah, we already have.
You already have?
Right. And so the assessments paid that back.
Okay, when you sell the property, then you're going to pay it off?
Or if people already own the property.
Is that right?
Or if people already own, there's people already bought the property.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, it's for the people who want it now and in the future, but we pay.
Well, like you said, when, you know, when I was reading in the paper, I thought, well, shoot, there's a lot, there's a lot of pieces of ground in the, in the city of Beloit that we're all going to help pay for it.
But that's us. And that's just for up there.
Up there, only up there.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Any other questions on levying assessments of North?
So as an owner of that property up there, how do you make the determination if you want to own the tax levy or if you want to pay it in full?
After tonight, or after the ordinance is published, I'll send a letter to each owner, and you'll have 30 days to pay in full, or if you don't, then we'll just assume that you don't want to pay in full, and then it'll be, I will give it to the county next October, and you'll see it on your tax statement, which then, of course, you can pay off at any time, and early if you want. But the letter says 30 days after Friday, so.
Any other questions? No other questions, we'll close our hearing on the public hearing on the North Campus Edition. Next item on the agenda this evening is levying assessments for Silver Fox Estates, Cooper Second Edition subdivision of the North Campus Edition. Is there any questions or comments at this time? Is there any more questions on the Silver Fox Estates Cooper assessments? There's no other questions, we'll close our public hearing on the levying assessments for Silver Fox Estates Cooper Second Edition subdivision of the North Campus Edition. Next item on the agenda this evening is Resolution 2015-24, amending Resolution 2014-20.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve Resolution 2015-24.
I second it. Motion's been made by Councilman Oddie that we approve Resolution 2015-24, amending Resolution 20-20, and Councilman Brown seconded. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Oddie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item on this evening's agenda is Ordinance 2172, levying assessments for the North Campus Editions.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve Ordinance 2172, levying assessments for North Campus Editions.
Motion's been made by Councilman Oddie that we approve Ordinance 2172, levying assessments for North Campus Editions, and was seconded by Councilman Brown. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, take a roll call, please.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2173, levying assessments for Silver Fox Estates, Cooper Second Edition subdivision of the North Campus Edition.
So I believe we accept the ordinance 2173.
Have a second?
Oh, move it.
I'm Miller. The motion is made by Councilman Brown that we approve Ordinance 2173, levying assessments for Silver Fox Estates, Cooper Second Edition subdivision of the North Campus Edition. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, roll call vote, please.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Next item on this evening on our agenda is KDOT Safe Routes to School. KDOT for the Safe Routes to School project in an amount not to exceed 250,000. Right. Got to start on the west side. No questions, I entertain a motion for acceptance.
I don't know.
Been moved by Councilman Peterson that we accept KDOT Safe Routes, seconded by Councilman Oddie. Is there any further discussion?
With the routes already determined?
I don't think, I think they, there's a route they want to, and I think Swobie has started the preliminary work. Is that right?
Yeah, that, that's correct. Preliminary work has been done. The route has not been locked down. If the route were to change very much, I don't know what KDOT would have to say about that, so as we get into it, I do believe we'll have a public informational meeting to discuss the route, and if, if there are changes to the route, we'll have to run those questions past KDOT.
Have you, have you went down and walked your route? You guys have to pick them out?
We have.
Seriously?
Well, hey, no, I didn't select the route. That was the, I think that is called the aware team from here in town. But yes, I have walked the route.
Well, I think there's going to be, you know, I know there's going to be some public comment periods, and I know there's some issues that's going to arise with this, and I hope we can work through them. Because I know in my neighborhood, I have neighbors who have wonderful trees that they've been planting for lots of years, and they have lots of growth on them, and it'd be sad to see those taken out. And if we could move the sidewalks to the north, so they can continue to have their tree, I'm a tree guy, I like trees. And, you know, my other neighbors to the south, they have a nice bur oak, that's a lifetime tree, and they're just, you know, I'd hate to see those taken out. And I know there's going to be issues with my property, but we'll deal with that as we work through it. But I think there's going to be a lot more issues than people ever even thought about once this starts going through, so it's, it's, I think, I like the intent of it, but I think there's a lot of things that wasn't looked at that was going to affect it, but we have plenty of time to work through those issues.
That's it.
Is this money, the 50,000, we're putting up, is that being set aside somewhere this year?
Yeah, that's in our CIP, so.
Yeah, and this doesn't, this doesn't, right, this doesn't take effect until actually
2016 is what we're due to progress.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm asking. There is also engineering cost on top of this 50,000.
Correct, yeah, there will be.
I mean, they didn't build it that, you know, what, have we had? The engineering cost didn't include it in the 50,000, it's on top of that.
Last year?
Yeah, from last year.
Right, from last year to this year, I think we're around 600,000 last year.
A carryover?
Yeah.
I was going to say, because looking at, looking at, bookkeeping for the last time that it was put out, there's not 700,000 dollars. That's why I thought about carrying on.
Well, there, yeah, there is now, if you have a catch, but all of their, everybody's in 700,000.
Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the downtown CVVG time extension, so they can get some windows and gutters, I think, finished up on the property.
Is this the same thing we talked about the last meeting, it goes down?
Yes, it is.
Why are we buying visiting?
Because personally, I felt that it needed to be revisited because of the fact that this affects us down the road on how it will be graded or, or looked at when we apply for other grants, because we have this money that's in place, that's not the city's money, that we can finish fixing up these facilities, and Regional Planner was recommending that we do this. It's not affecting the city at all. It's the one time, the last time it can be extended to finish the project, so I thought it should be looked at.
Well, I, I know, I talked to them about whose property is this involved totally?
I think it's Jeff Robert.
They're both here today.
Gloria, Gloria's falling out, it's their property.
If it affects Gloria's property, I will look for it, otherwise, I would, so that's fine.
Because they've made a lot of investments, personal money that they matched up with these programs, so I felt that it needed to be further counseling, and so we approved it.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the time extension grant.
It's been moved by Councilman Oddie that we approve the CVVG extension, and a second by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion?
Can we open it up to the property owners?
Sure can, if they'd like to speak.
I would ask that the city council extend it, and the reason is, is we just need another 30 days to finish it up. I've already got somebody that's working on the guttering, and the guttering will be completed within, you know, hopefully the next week or so, but, you know, with 30 days and we can get it wrapped up, we've invested, you know, the grant invested a lot of money into the buildings that, you know, as an owner, that we couldn't, you know, invest ourselves. We have the 20% that we were putting in on it, so it's no, like, at no cost to us, but this is fixing up the outside of the building. We also have taken our money and invested in the inside structure as well. So if you haven't been into my business lately, if you'll come in, you know, we re-sheetrocked, we lowered the ceilings and everything, but it's into electrical, new lighting, and on the outside, we've done all the tech pointing and fixed up all the windows and everything else, so there's a lot of work that has went into the buildings and everything, so I'm just requesting that you give us another 30 days and we can get that done.
Thank you for investing in our community. Okay, any other questions? Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
No.
Peterson?
No.
Latrell?
No.
Brown?
Yep.
Oddie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a term.
So move.
We have a motion for a term that I have a second.
Go move.
Seconded by Councilman Peterson. Is there any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same.
Yes.
Motion carries. We adjourn. We'll now go into the work session with the city attorney report.
Nothing else tonight, thank you.
Thank you. City administrative report.
The only thing I have is if you have any questions about the pool reports that Park and Rec provided in there, you can see the kind of, the highlights here as far as our expenditures and whatever, pretty much 2015 looks like, 2014 looks like 2013, not too much difference here in, in those, those items, and kind of plan on doing the same thing next year, I don't think we really have. So, I just thought I'd give you an overview, you can see before, going back to 2009, it's about six, seven zeros here of what we've done here at the pool, and so, kind of where we're talking. About this is the fourth, fourth year we've had.
Just a launch?
Yeah, yeah, it's about, 2015, about 20,000.
Bob has a question.
Actually, maybe we haven't had this long enough. Since schools have started earlier and earlier, has that had a major impact on?
No, that's a good question. I, I think it's, it's hard to say, because a lot of people attend bypasses. We get a fair amount of walking of people on a daily basis, but a lot of people who go there every day will buy pads, so you get that, you get that one, yeah, so it really doesn't hurt that. It'd be great if we could keep it open longer, though, because it's
Well, I realize.
80-something degrees the days out without it, but yeah. But they do start early and early, it's in early years, so.
Is there a particular age, I mean, that a student has to be, before they can take the lifesaving?
Yes, they have to be 15 years old, according to the Red Cross.
They used to keep that pool open.
And the reason we can't keep the pool open is because a lot of our life
Well, our, all of our managers this year were schoolteachers, and most of our kids are in sports or in college. So once college kids leave and kids go back to sports, I look at all my lifeguards of my managers.
Yeah, the only thing you can do is possibly keep it open on the weekends, but the only problem with that is it costs you a lot of capital to keep the pool open, and nobody's using it during the week, then you only use it for two days. So that, that'll, that'll, that'll really hurt you by a point at that point, so, yeah, I'd like to keep it open, say, middle of September would be a good, good deal, but yeah, they come back whenever and early, and I don't think we can stop that, so.
Hey, I've been leaving stuff on, somebody has to take maintenance care of it.
Right, yeah, so that'd become a maintenance issue there, so.
The cool weather probably affected us there.
Yeah, we did get some, yeah, we did some rainy cool weather, some more than, more than usual, but, you know, but anyway, we are, you know, still get good attendance and still, still made an attraction for us.
And thank you, you and your staff, for taking care of that wonderful facility. I know my, my granddaughter loves it, so it's, I'm glad we have it. Next item on the agenda is the East Main Street, the name is Stuart Porter, Swobie is going to address the council this evening.
Yes, we are working through the design of the East Main Street project, and last week met with Glenn and Mike Clark, had some questions for them regarding a few of the items on the East Main Street project, and so after that discussion, I guess I felt like it was worthwhile to take a few minutes and talk to the council about what we had on the project and get a couple of questions answered. I have updated cost estimates, if you want to see them. I didn't have them ready in time for council packets, so if you don't want to see them, I can get them in your next council package, whatever you want to do, but I can pass them out now. I also have some drawings that might help you with answers to questions that I've got. So do you want this stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm passing this around.
Test.
Yeah, yeah, there will be.
Let me try to mix that up.
What I, what I'm putting in front of you is just a layout map, it is not intended to be any, any sort of finished product, but it gives you a map of, of the, of the alignment for East Main Street. When I'll get you a copy. I need this for discussion, I thought I had more, but I missed a lot of it. In no particular order, I do have a few questions that have came up during the design project, and
Here's some, two pages. Yeah.
There should be two pages.
Yeah.
One up and come.
Richard's messed it up three weeks ago.
Okay, in no particular order, one of the questions that came up early in the design process is, do we want to have sidewalk along East Main Street out to Casey's? I have ran that question past Glenn's office, and the answer was, yeah, we'd like to investigate, but we want to see what it's going to cost. So we've updated the cost estimate. The cost estimate, as it turns out, is very, very close to the original cost estimate, taking a couple of things into consideration. Originally, when this project was conceived, we were looking at a pavement section that was 31 feet back to back. We are now looking at a 30, I said that wrong, we were looking at a 33-foot pavement section back of curb to back of curb. We're now looking at a 31-foot pavement section, which would be consistent with many of the city streets in town. Another thing that I took out of the cost estimate is the inflation factor that was in the previous cost estimates, because we are getting very close to advertising the project and going to construction. So we're within $5,000 of the original budget, so, and that's with the sidewalk included. So question number one, once again, in no particular order, does the city council want to have sidewalks along the route?
Would it be on the north side of the street?
It will be on the north side.
It used to be.
At least that's, that's where we're looking at.
I think it'd be great, you know, I live over there, travel that street line, so it just scares me, this, seeing some of them little kids, they're out there on their bikes or walking, and of course their parents will be watching, but I think it'd be awesome.
I've, I've noticed some people using walking right along East Main Street, and that does, it is a concern. Where we can, we will provide a, say, a four-foot buffer, plus or minus, between the edge of pavement and the edge of the sidewalk, so there is a little bit of space between the, the driving lane and the sidewalk.
I think it'd be a real plus.
Is this going to allow for a bridge to cross the bridge anywhere if you're there?
Well, the bridge is wide through there.
We come off the sidewalk, walk out the street, and then back.
No, 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 there'll be, there's room for sidewalk behind the back of curb across the bridge.
Oh, there is, okay.
Yes, there is. Yes, now that is one place where the sidewalk will migrate very close to the back of curb, but there is room there.
I've got a question, Stuart. On, I'm looking at down there where Junior Brown has his shop, and that bridge from Rogers to Mrs. Schuster, how much excavating is going to have to be done? Or is there going to be any excavating down there by Mrs. Schuster's? She's got that big yard right east of the bridge.
And are you referring specifically to the, the landscape timber retaining wall thing? I mean, is that what you're?
No, I'm just looking at the, that area of street in there, how much excavation will be done? Will that, will that street be brought down?
Absolutely. It's being brought down approximately two feet. I did not print out the pro, the proposed profiles, because I didn't want to bog you down with a bunch of information, but if you want that information, I can give that to you.
That's all I was.
But in general, the, the area east of the bridge will be depressed, say, a couple of feet, so that stormwater will get from the side yards into the street, and then we'll pick it up with enclosed storm sewer system, okay? So that's down in the, the low area, and then east of the Fox Bridge. Okay, and then as, at the crest of the hill, just east of Topeka Street, that will also be depressed approximately two feet. And what that will do is it'll provide greater sight distance for people as they're, as they're coming from Highway 24, or as they're heading out of town, it'll, it'll improve sight distance in, in that area, and I think that's pretty important. It'll, it'll, it'll really improve the aesthetics of that drive, in my opinion.
With the road, with the road coming down, is it going to be, is it going to flood when you get high water in there, the bridge? Is it the elevation of the street going down?
The elevation of the street will come down, but I guess the only way that would happen is if water were already coming out of the, the channel of where the bridge is at.
Yeah, well, I mean, I was just saying, in years past, when that thing slammed into that one bridge, we had this flood down.
Camper washed down. Yeah, a camper must've down there and plugged it up.
Oh, oh, a camper came down the creek and?
He didn't get it moved out of there quick enough, and then water come out and washed the camper down, and plugged the tubes up, and he came house.
And I think before the street was above that water line, right, and now it's, it has to be lower.
Correct, but in the, for the street to flood, water would have to come up into the side yards and flood homes, and in my opinion, it's, it's much more important to provide a conduit for water to get away, and, and honestly, I don't think that that's going to cause any, any problems for stem.
Probably, it'll be any worse than it is.
That's correct. In, in most instances, it'll help sustain.
Well, in the bridge on court, it's probably a little bit lower than what I made.
Probably, I have, we have not shot.
Because we had water over that, that time, but I think it's quite a bit lower.
You had a car there for one time.
That was all the next.
No, isn't that one?
That was true.
So, I mean, are we in agreement that sidewalk's a good thing, or is, is that something you guys want to take to formal action? And I don't care, I'm just.
I'd like to see it.
I think it'd be a good time to do it.
Okay.
Do we need to talk to property owners about it?
Well, it would be, it would be placed on city right of way. I do not know what city's policies are for placing sidewalks in public.
They'll be tore up anyway, so what's the difference?
Well, there will be a substantial amount of disrupt, or grading along the route, because we're going to fill those ditches in, in most places. There's a couple of places that aren't, but in general, they're going to be filled.
Is the plan still to have it sub, or contracted out and be done in six months instead of two years?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're going to talk about that in just a little bit, too.
Is there, will there be some retaining walls after we spin into any of those yards up in there? I didn't know how any of that leaves, if you blow it.
I don't think so.
Everything.
No, everything, we're, the way we're, the way it is laid out, I don't think there will be any retaining walls.
Good.
One question that came up during our discussions is, we are putting curving gutter from Baldwin all the way to slightly past Topeka, but there is a question, and it's an aesthetic question, do you want to have curving gutter from Highway 24 to Casey's? Or do we want to, because we've got open ditches there, and unless somebody has a major issue, we were not planning to fill in those ditches. They serve the purpose, Casey spent a lot of money on landscaping, we were going to leave those ditches. And so my opinion would be, we don't put a curving gutter section in from Highway 24 to Casey's. We have a wide roadway, and because Casey's does not have any curving gutter on their entrance. And then, and then on the west side of Casey's, that's where we could start the curving gutter section.
Question, where does the sidewalk end?
For the one up we keep.
We would, yeah, right at the Casey's entrance.
So basically, go past Mrs. Zilly opposite.
Yeah. Well, right in front of her.
How it works.
Okay, I think it makes sense. There isn't but a couple thousand dollars worth of difference between the two options, but we want to make sure that, or I want to make sure that we at least talk about it, and Okay, I think it makes sense, there isn't but a couple thousand dollars worth of difference between the two options, but we wanna make sure that, or I wanna make sure that we at least talk about it and, um, and run it past the city. Because, um, when it's all said and done, you're gonna drive into town, and the curving gutter is going to start west of Casey's.
What about that water east of there, from, to the highway to where we start the curving gutter? Or, or the Casey's ditch, where's that water gonna end up at?
It, it goes, it goes underneath the street, there's a.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a tube going across.
There's a thirty-six inch tube that goes from the north to the south, and Casey's ditch is graded to that court.
Oh, we're, we're, we're Kerry Coles.
Correct.
Okay.